This meeting is being held at Town Hall Tuesday evening, September 5th, 2017. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times on the town's information channel over the next week. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of the Town of Lexington. At this time, I would like to introduce you, my fellow council members. To my left is Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Good evening.
To her left is Councilmember Todd Corns.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ted Stamblidis.
Good evening, y'all.
And to his right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
At this time, I would like to ask Chaplain Russ Thompson from the Town of Lexington Police Department Chaplain Services to please come forward and offer invocation for us for tonight's meeting.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, all the citizens present tonight must have a word of prayer about that, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for each one that's here tonight. We pause to remember those who've been affected by Hurricane Harvey in Texas and Louisiana. Father, we ask for your grace and mercy to cover them. Also, we pray for those in the path of Hurricane Irma that you protect and deliver them from the ravages of the storm. And now, Father, we thank you for the dedicated service of each council member for the meeting tonight. Lord, I pray that you give them wisdom and divine guidance. And I pray, Father, that your Spirit will be strong in their deliberations and their decisions. And after the meeting tonight, Lord, I pray that your protection will go with each of us and that your blessings will flow over us. For I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Russ, I want to personally thank you for what you do for us in the police department here. It's a very valuable service and we appreciate it very much.
It's my honor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any former military or other than chief, any law enforcement officers in the crowd? Would you please step forward to the microphone, sir? You're not just going to show up to a meeting and not say anything, are you? If you would, introduce yourself and what I'd like you to do is lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, for us tonight.
Okay, my name is Mike Clef, the retired Army Captain. And I'm just a new citizen in your wonderful county of Lexington. And I'm happy and proud to be here.
Well, thank you very much for your service. If you would, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Captain, thank you very much. Thank you for your service. At this time, I will call the meeting to order and like to report to you on our executive session this evening. During our executive session, we discussed two legal issues, one issue regarding legislative authority of council. The second legal issue was legal advice regarding a listed agenda item. We had two contractual and economic development issues, one issue related to Project Wade and one issue related to potential sale of town property. No vote was taken in the meeting this evening. Do I have a motion to ratify the mayor's executive session report?
Seven.
We have a motion from Councilmember Manis and a second from Councilmember Williams. Any other discussion? Hearing none. For approval, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Deletions on the agenda for this evening, are there any deletions on tonight's agenda from anyone? Hearing no deletion, we will move into approval of minutes. Copies of the minutes from council work session on August 21st, 2017 were provided in your packets. Are there any omissions, additions, or corrections to council work session, August 21st, 2017? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Seven.
Kathy makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Corns seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. We will move right into presentations. Our first presentation tonight is from MASC Field Services Manager Jeff Shaker. Jeff, please come forward to the microphone. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you.
A pleasure to be here. Thank you, Council, for having me this evening. My name is Jeff Shaker. I think many of you know me, but I'm one of two field service managers with the Municipal Association. And I'm sure that many of you are familiar with the association, but there may be folks in attendance that aren't. So I thought I'd talk a little bit about the association-
That'd be great.
...and why we exist and what we try to do for the town. But the association is a nonprofit entity that was established in the late 1930s. And when you think back to the '30s, it was a difficult time. It was a difficult time for families. It was a difficult time for businesses. It's a tough time for cities, too. And back in that day and age, like today, cities and towns were creatures of the state, but even more so. Because at that time, we did not operate under home rule, we operated under Dillon's rule. So all the resources that cities and towns needed to operate with came from the state or were specifically provided for by the state. And so during tough times, when resources are scarce, there's a lot of competition. And cities came together recognizing that they could be a lot more successful with the General Assembly, securing what they needed to operate if they had one voice. And so the association was established. And so we were primarily created as an advocacy group, or what some folks would refer to as lobbying, although advocacy is a little more of a comprehensive term than lobbying. But the association in the 70-plus years since that time has grown tremendously into a much larger organization that provides collection programs for the cities, education and training for council members and just about every discipline of staff that you employ within your organization here in Lexington. We also provide, of course, our lobbying and advocacy programs as well. So the association tries or strives to provide as much service as we can to cities and towns. And there are 270 of them in the state of South Carolina. One of the programs that we have is the Field Services Program. And that's the program that I'm a part of. And the purpose of the Field Services Program is to bring the resources of the Municipal Association to the cities. And I'm fortunate to have, as my territory, the Midlands and the upstate. I like to describe it to folks as everything, because this map of interstates is a little more intuitive to folks, everything west of I-77 and north of I-20. There's about 116 cities and towns in that area, and actually, it's going to be 117 here pretty soon. Because the tiny community of Van Wick in Lancaster County has voted to incorporate. And so that will become effective when they elect their council and their mayor in November. But what I try to do with those cities is to build a relationship with them, communicate on legislative issues and issues that are of interest to cities, but then also to be a technical resource. Prior to coming to the association, I was a city manager and worked with the city of Newbury for 12 years. And so that's a little bit about the association and about me. But why I'm here this evening, and it's a pleasure to be here, is to recognize the council and the staff for winning a municipal achievement award, which is something that we annually award. And this one was for the Ice House Amphitheater Project, which is a beautiful facility. I had a chance to actually go over there before the presentation this evening, and y'all just did a remarkable job with it. We presented this award to you formally at our Municipal Association Annual Meeting, which was held back in July. Very many of our 270 cities in the state send representatives to that meeting, and I know many of y'all were able to attend. And on Saturday morning, we had an awards breakfast and presented this award to Mayor McDougall, who was present to receive it. And I know, again, many of you were there as well. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to share this accomplishment with everybody that's in attendance this evening, but then also generate more awareness about this project, which is fabulous, and the fact that the town won an award for it. So what I thought we would do, if y'all don't mind, before I present the award to you, is to play the video, because I think the video is very, very good presentation video.
Population category 10,000 to 20,000, the Town of Lexington. Rapid growth posed a dilemma in the Town of Lexington. In 2010, the fourth fastest growing municipality in South Carolina had already grown 83% since 2000 and was projected to grow another 80% in the coming decade. Town leaders took steps to preserve Lexington's small-town charm and quality of life by implementing a vision plan in 2012. The vision plan proposed improvements to the town that would continue to attract newcomers, foster new economic development, and improve quality of life for current residents. One of the primary goals in the vision plan was to create an outdoor entertainment venue. The town reached its goal with the opening of the 900-seat Ice House Amphitheater in the heart of Lexington.
Well, the amphitheater was built on the premise that it would be our driver for redevelopment for downtown. We had a stagnant downtown. As a matter of fact, the building right behind me, a year and a half ago, had a pine tree growing through the center of it with a limb growing out on Main Street. It actually broke the window and the limb was growing out the window. So we're very proud of what we've done here, because it has certainly done what we expected it to do, and that is to drive economic development on Main Street.
The town used general fund revenue to purchase, clear, and rehabilitate the property and created a downtown tax increment financing district to pay for the construction of the amphitheater. The venue's first free concert featuring the Root Doctors took place in October of 2016. Since the first event, the amphitheater is abuzz with concerts, festivals, and services. The amphitheater is encouraging feet on the street and connecting traffic to Lexington Square Park, Virginia Hilton Park, the Lexington Municipal Complex, and the Palmetto Collegiate Institute.
We've seen a lot of excitement by our residents to be able to come down and participate in events, especially the concerts we've been doing. And we moved our movies in the park over here, so we've seen a lot of family activity and people coming together and also partnering with other organizations in the community to have Lexington School District One's art showcase here for the community and the Lexington County Chili Cook-Off here. And just huge crowds coming to it and really enjoying and having a good time outside.
The Ice House Amphitheater is now a hub of excitement. With a full calendar of events, the venue brings residents and visitors alike to downtown
Very nice. Yes.
Like I mentioned, this was a fantastic project and an exceptional facility. And, you know, one of the purposes of this awards program and why the association had created, I think, almost 15 years ago, was to share great ideas like this one with our other cities. And that's exactly what y'all accomplished, and I guess we accomplished working with you back in July, because we had over 300 municipal officials that were present at that breakfast and saw this same video. And I'm sure that it gave them some ideas that they can take back to their community and hopefully be as equally successful as y'all have been with this facility. I know, Mayor, you were real pleased to accept the award on behalf of the town. And again, it's a pleasure for me to be here this evening to share it with y'all again. So without any further ado, maybe if y'all could join me in front of the dais and-
Sure. Let's start by-
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Yes, sir.
Good deal. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Our next presentation is a proclamation from Councilmember Steve Baker, designating September 17th to September 23rd as Constitution Week. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'd like to invite Pam Freck, if she's here, to the podium, as well as Carolyn McKnight, Norm McCourly, Peggy Como, Jean Charles, and Jean Smith. Thank y'all for being here. This is a proclamation of the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, designating September 17 through 23, 2017, as Constitution Week. Whereas the tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and in 1955, the DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 and 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. And whereas, September 17, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, learning about the principles of the Constitution allows us to reflect on the rights and privileges of citizenship. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington, South Carolina, that September 17 through 23, 2017 is hereby declared as Constitution Week in the Town of Lexington. And all citizens are encouraged to work together to renew and deepen their appreciation for the unique and precious heritage passed on to us by our founding fathers through the United States Constitution. Date is this 5th day of September, 2017. Mayor Steve McDougall.
Congratulations, ladies. The microphone is yours. If anybody would like to step forward and say something.
We didn't know we had to. But we do want to thank you and just tell you that the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is the largest nonprofit organization in the United States. And we're thankful, over 125 years old now. And in 2018, South Carolina, we all had reached the state of South Carolina 125 years too. So we appreciate this and we appreciate being able to meet in Lexington, and we meet at the Lexington County Library. So we get to meet locally and folks come and join us once in a while. So thank you.
Very good. Thank y'all for being with us.
And we're also really proud to say we have 109 members.
Oh, that's great. Wow.
We are quite proud of that.
Very good. Let's take a picture.
Come on, Nick.
All right, ladies, got this one and then that. One, two, three. Right.
Thank y'all for being with us.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we will move into a vision plan update. Vision plan update for September 2017. First on the list is the Ice House Amphitheater. As just mentioned in the presentation earlier, the Town of Lexington's Ice House Amphitheater was just named the 2017 Municipal Association of South Carolina Achievement Award winner. So very proud about that recognition for the Ice House Amphitheater. Fall is in the air. I don't know about that, but it was 91 degrees today. We have a very busy month at the Ice House Amphitheater, starting with three shows, September 7th, 8th, and 10th. The new circus is in town. It's called the Soda City Cirque presents Paper Moon Valley, Show Three. So again, the 7th, the 8th, and the 10th. So you have three chances to see that show at the Ice House Amphitheater. Pretty unique experience. Also, Freeway Music School will host a free student showcase on Sunday, September 17th. The Lexington Live Concert Series that we were so proudly put on last year starts back this month. The free concerts will take place on Thursday evenings, starting at 6:30 PM. The beginning lineup is September 21st will be a band called The Business. And September 28th is a band called The Men of Distinction. Some of you have heard of them. They've been around for a while. Look forward to both of those concerts in September. Finally, the Ultimate Class Rock Tribute will take place on Friday, September 22nd, at 6:00 PM. The night features On the Border, which is an Eagles tribute band, and also The Resurrection, which is a Journey tribute band. So we look forward to a lot of great things in September. That is, let's see, three, four, five, six items coming up in September. So plenty of chances to get out and see the Ice House Amphitheater and check it out and enjoy it. Most of those are free. For more information, ticket purchasing, or a full calendar of events, please look at our website, www.icshouseamphitheater.com. Moving on for the vision plan update, the Eclipse Fest was a huge success. The Town of Lexington was honored to be part of the Solar Totality Monday, August 21st, 2017, and I have to say, the longest amount of totality in the region. So if you aren't here, you missed at least two extra seconds of it. More than 1,500 people descended on Lexington to watch the historical scientific event. The Ice House Amphitheater hosted Eclipse Fest, while Gibson Pond Park and Lexington Square Park were open to the public for viewing, and it both were at full capacity. We had visitors from North Carolina, Georgia, Florida, and New York, along with international visitors from England, the Netherlands, and Russia. Thank you for choosing Lexington as your site to view this once-in-a-lifetime event. And we found out about these folks from the international community. Mayor Pro Tem was going around and introducing herself to all the new faces and found a lot of new friends that day. It was a lot of fun. The Farmer's Market is in full swing, as you know. The Town of Lexington Farmer's Market operates every Saturday morning from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, running through September 30th. And that is located at Lexington Square Park. That is, address is 205 East Main Street. It's right in front of the Lexington County Administration Building. The Town of Lexington Farmer's Market uses a community-friendly atmosphere to promote, support, and encourage local production while educating citizens on the benefits of eating local, fresh produce, and supporting local artists and certified SC program. For more information, contact Walker Brewer. He is our downtown venue promoter at 803-358-7275, or visit our website at lexsc.com. In addition to the vision plan update, I'm happy to announce the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast will be held Wednesday, November 1st, at 7:30 AM at the Lexington County Stadium. That's where the Blowfish play baseball. So we're very excited to have that. This will be the first one that we've ever done. Excited to be partners with Blowfish Baseball and put that on for you. Our guest speaker will be former Gamecock head coach for the baseball team and New York MVP of the New York Mets. Guest speaker is Bobby Richardson. If y'all would, Richardson, if y'all would, please come out and enjoy that. It'd be a wonderful event. At this time, we will move right into a traffic update from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please be aware of the ongoing construction activity along Sunset Boulevard near Mirnold Springs and Hope Ferry Road. We have lots of construction going on over there. Also, the One Way Pair Project has been awarded to Cherokee Contractors of Columbia, South Carolina. The construction is expected to begin in the next few weeks. The new school year has begun, bringing lots of changes to our familiar traffic patterns, and some of them seem slower. Our staff is working very hard, making adjustments to the adaptive signal system to provide the best possible services. So be patient, they should get that straightened out pretty soon. The next traffic committee meeting will be Wednesday, September 13th, at 8:00 AM in the third floor comforts room of Town Hall. Finally, if you are aware of any specific traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know about it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. At this time, we will open up for public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5498-05-056, located at the 100 Block of Industrial Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, that concludes our public hearings for tonight. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5498-05-056, located in the 100 Block of Industrial Drive. Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Marilla Properties LLC owns 3.3 acres located in the 100 Block of Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. Carolina Industrial Products is planning to construct a new facility on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial and industrial. Industrial Drive is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended industrial zoning for the property and arterial road classification for industrial drive. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Heard Councilmember Williams second the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have questions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stamblidis.
For Mr. Redpool, what is Carolina Industrial Products, just for my sake of education? I'll ask John Hanson to answer that for us.
Mr. Hanson?
They distribute industrial batteries and industrial chargers for forklifts and things like that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. That concludes old business. We will move right into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stamblidis. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 5300-02-006, located on Buck Drive. Councilmember Ted Stamblidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council. Bar Lake Associates LLC owns 56.7 acres on Buck Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. This parcel is part of a Bar Lake Phase III, which is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone protected residential II or PR II. This parcel does not have any road frontage. The planning commission reviewed the annexation during their August meeting and recommended the same zoning classification for this parcel, and I'd like to make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Stamblidis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Frost, would you make one clarification for me, please? I know that some residents were there talking about the additional access to the property.
Yes.
And I know at one point, there was some discussion about maybe this item coming back to the planning commission.
At the point when they're ready to do a, I guess, was it site plan approval, John, that we wanted addressing the second access on Marilla?
Site plan approval was the thing that was brought back in September with the annexation. Since you required two readings, we went in.
So we're going to annex the property, but we're still going to protect those residents by using the site plan approval to do that process.
Hopefully, the site plan issues will be taken care of during the September Planning Commission meeting, which will be before your final reading.
Sure. Thank you. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Corns. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County Tax Map Number 4300-07-169, located behind 1002 West Main Street. Councilmember Todd Corns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Autumnwood Crossing LP owns 4.47 acres located behind 1,002 West Main Street and has petitioned to annex the property. A 50-unit age-restricted apartment facility and a separate small commercial parcel is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone general commercial and protected residential. West Main Street is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended zoning the property high-density residential and office commercial with a planned unit development special overlay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Mr. Corns makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr.- Mr. Stambleidis second some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance approving a mixed-use planned unit development consisting of an age-restricted apartment complex and additional commercial parcel. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Autumnwood Crossing LP is requesting site plan approval for a planned development consisting of a 50-unit age-restricted apartment complex and a small commercial parcel to be located behind the Taco Bell at 1,002 West Main Street. The entire development will encompass 4.47 acres with the apartment complex using the bulk of the property. The primary reason for the planned development request is because the buffer and setbacks proposed on the apartment complex do not meet traditional zoning requirements. The planning commission reviewed this project during their August meeting and conditionally recommended approval. The condition requires the applicant to acquire a cross-access agreement that provides Autumnwood with permanent access to the stoplight located at West Main Street between the Kmart and the Food Lion properties. Mr. Mayor, I would move for first reading approval of the PUD as the planning commission recommended, with the stipulation that perpetual irrevocable deeded access easement for ingress and egress be recorded, allowing access to the traffic signal at the Kmart Shopping Center located next door, and a deed restriction be recorded indicating the property shall not convert to a nonprofit status or enter any other status rendering the property nontaxable. In addition, the Derrick Street extension, uh, to be used for access shall be brought up to the construction standards necessary for it to be turned over to the town for public maintenance. I'd like to make that form of a motion at this time.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 3300-04-014, located at 1120 Old Cherokee Road. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Old Cherokee Investors LLC owns 20.03 acres located at 1120 Old Cherokee Road and has petitioned to annex a portion of the property. The property is currently undeveloped, but a climate-controlled self-storage facility is being planned on the site. Properties in town near this one are zoned limited commercial and protected residential. Old Cherokee Road is classified as a collector road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended limited commercial zoning for this property, as well as the 30-foot strip that was previously annexed on this parcel. The commission also recommended classifying Old Cherokee Road as a collector road. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Stambleidis seconds the motion. Any further discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Carnes.
Uh, maybe, maybe John, maybe you can help us out. The, uh, adjacent properties, are there, are there residential properties anywhere adjacent to this one? I know there's some residential construction in that area.
No, sir. If you, if you can see the aerial map, that is, the, to the right of it is a landscape supply location.
Okay.
And the left of it is a, is a farm field.
Yeah, it's just the, the aerial we got cuts it off, so it looks like it's a, it's a strip, and then there's a further piece going back.
There, there is residential directly across the street that's being used residentially.
Okay, but nothing adjacent.
But not on the same side. So I think there is work around.
And there's a subdivision that's going in at the back, but it's under construction now.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for you. What's the, so what is the subdivision, the one that's going in the back? So it's adjacent to this property at the top end of the property, I'm assuming?
It is, yes.
Again, my aerial's kind of cut off, so I can't see the whole thing. Uh, what is the, what is the buffer between the zoning we're proposing here and that residential? Is that residential already laid out in such a way that there's a big buffer between them?
Uh, there, the, there will be a 30-foot, at least a minimum 30-foot requirement, but the site plan for the, um, facility that's under, that's planned for that site, I think will have somewhere near 100 feet, so.
And it's also important to note that it's the same property owner. So the, this, this property is owned by the same people that are building that subdivision.
The set, the developer.
The, the, yeah, the, the property owners, the same.
Right.
Mr. Stambleidis, you had a question?
Um, tagging on to Mr. Car, Councilman Carnes' question, uh, since it's gonna be annexed, they're gonna be also meeting our landscape requirements, correct?
It will, yes.
Okay, and those landscape requirements will protect, even though it's owned by the same developer, will protect the citizens or the, uh, the residents that are gonna be building that?
Well, I, I think two things that will play into this scenario is, one, this facility will be constructed before there's any houses back there, so anybody that buys a house will know they're gonna be adjacent to that. But also, yes, it will be, be required to at least have a eight-foot, uh, 90% opaque screening between the commercial and the residential, but like I said, it's a, I think it's 100 feet, and there's a wetlands and a creek in between, so I, I think it's gonna be.
Good.
A, a scenario where the residents won't know, and, and those types of facilities are very low, uh, traffic count and that type of thing.
One last question, uh, and we may have already done it, so I don't recall. Is that neighborhood already been annexed or in the town yet?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Hanson, in that 100-foot buffer, are they gonna be allowed to park vehicles, throw boats, campers, or is that simply gonna stay?
Their requirement will be, um, you can do passive uses in a buffer area, uh, but you, you could put a, um, you could not put a parking lot, you could put a driveway through it, um, but you would still have to maintain that eight-foot, 90% opaque, um, screening, no matter what you did back there. But as I said, I believe the property would be virtually undevelopable because of the wetlands and the creek and, and that type of thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Pro Tem Hazel Livingston. First reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map number 5498-05-003, located adjacent to 169 Industrial Drive. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. GCI LLC owns 4.38 acres located adjacent to 169 Industrial Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. A 2,400-square-foot warehouse is being planned on this site. Properties in town near this one are zoned industrial and Industrial Drive is classified as an arterial road. The planning commission reviewed this annexation during their August meeting and recommended the same, same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for first reading of approval.
Mayor Pro Tem makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams second some motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, sir. Mr. Stambleidis.
Uh, I hate to be a stickler for, or asking identities, but what's gonna be, uh, what's that warehouse gonna be used for? Is it for industrial use, or is it for construction?
We don't know.
Manufacturing? Do we? Mr. Hanson, thank you once again for approaching the microphone.
Uh, we, we are aware of what it is, but, um, they do not want it publicly known at this point. Um, but suffice it to say that it would not be something that you all would be concerned about in an, an industrial area. Plumbing supplies.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.[1155.83][1155.83](Laughter).
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. First reading of an amendment to the zoning ordinance allowing climate-controlled self-storage businesses to be located in limited commercial zones. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mini storage facilities over 7,500 square feet in size are currently allowed only in general commercial and industrial zones. A change in the industry has occurred with more construction of self-contained, climate-controlled facilities and fewer of the traditional mini storage facilities with drive-up accessibility. As a result, the planning commission recommended amending the ordinance to create a distinction between these two types of businesses. The recommendation is to allow climate-controlled facilities that have a single building with limited customer access points to be located on the property zoned limited commercial with collector road access. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams second some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stambleidis. First reading of an ordinance adopting changes to the Lexington County Animal Control Ordinance. Councilmember Stambleidis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council. Lexington County entered into agreement with Palmetto Lifeline Incorporated implementing the Community Cat Ordinance. For the town to continue to participate with Lexington County's animal services program and be part of the Community Cat program, the town needs to adopt the changes Lexington County made to its own ordinance. Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council, I'd like to make a motion for final, first reading approval of ordinance adopting changes to the Lexington County Animal Control Ordinance.
Councilmember Stambleidis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Carnes second some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. It's unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. First reading of an ordinance expanding the Downtown Overlay District. Councilmember Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Downtown Overlay District allows some flexibility in the zoning and landscape requirements for properties that are part of the overlay. The purpose of this overlay is to encourage occupancy of existing buildings and protect the unique character of the downtown area. With the One Way Pair Project about to begin, the planning commission recommended expanding this district to include the properties along Church Street and North Lake Drive, between Main Street and the intersection of Church Street and North Lake Drive. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval of this addition to the Downtown Overlay District.
Councilmember Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem second some motion. Any further discussion?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I do have a-
Yes, sir. Mr. Stambleidis.
What prompted the Downtown Overlay District? Uh, is there a particular instance where a construction project was going on in an existing building?
It was in effect, um, when I started with the town more than 15 years ago. Um, I, but I believe that what prompted it is just the fact that we have some buildings downtown, for instance, that their footprint of the building is the entire footprint of the parcel. They can never meet parking standards, they can never add landscaping, things like that. So it's special exceptions for these, you know, these odd circumstances that we find ourselves in 100-year-old buildings downtown, but just aren't the case for new construction. Um, so that's, that's where it's originally came from.
So anybody who would entertain the idea of, of bringing a business into one of the existing buildings, they wouldn't have to meet, uh, some of our landscape ordinances?
Sure.
And what about as far as the, the facade program that would still apply to these particular projects and?
Yeah, that, that's a little bit different. Um, that's a separate program. This is, this is more of an, of a, the overlay that allows those special exceptions, you know, buildings closing to the street and things like that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. Amendment to the Special Event Permit Policy. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three years ago, Town Council adopted a special event policy. Some examples of events that may require a special event permit include, but not are, but are not limited to carnivals, fairs, markets, concerts, festivals, parades, displays, grand openings, or tent sales. The current policy limits the duration of a special event to three days. During the, uh, August 21st work session, Council discussed a revision to this policy that would allow grand openings only to be, um, extended to seven days. Um, at this point, I'd like to make a motion for adoption of the policy to, it's only changing the grand openings to seven days, all the others would stay three.
Mr. Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker second some motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Amendment to the Facade Grant Eligibility. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. During their July retreat, Council discussed expanding the facade grant eligibility area. At their August meeting, the Board of Apairance recommended expanding the area to include portions of Columbia Avenue and West Main Street, as well as North and South Lake Boulevards. During the August 21, 2017 work session, Council agreed with the Board of Apairance recommendation to revise the facade grant eligibility requirements and proposed including South Lake Drive to Interstate 20, and also to allow building demolition projects to qualify for the facade grant program. I make a motion for adoption of the revisions to the facade grant eligibility.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Not second.
Councilmember Manis seconds the motion. Do, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. May I?
Yes, sir. Mr. Carnes.
Just, um, I wasn't obviously in the meeting, but I'm still trying to get my mind around the eligibility of demolition projects, because at any point, somebody's taking an old building and demolishing it, they're in the process of redevelopment, and they're obviously gonna build something. Uh, I don't, I don't know that people are gonna demolish anything and leave it bare. And so, couple of questions is, are people eligible to get a grant for demolition, and then, does that disqualify them from any type of grant for a future facade? Uh, is it just one per property? Because seems like, I don't know that we're really gonna incentivize anybody to do demolition, unless I'm missing something. You got any insight?
Sure, yes, sir. Um, so let's answer your first question first, which was, are you eligible for multiple facade grants? And, uh, and, uh, you know, ultimately, that's determined by the Board of Apairance. They, they recommend those facade grants, and they have recommended multiple, they have allowed multiple applications for different projects, usually spanning a few years. Um, so I would say that, that the history is yes, that they've allowed that, that to happen before. Um, the, the question about demolition, I think there are a couple of very specific buildings that Council has asked staff to work with and see if we can't find a solution to. Um, you know, not to shame those owners and name them publicly, um, which we have worked with, and, and yes, I believe that, um, some of those owners would take advantage of that program and demo without an intention to immediately rebuild. Now, that doesn't mean that, that they will never redevelop the site. Obviously, at some point, there's a, there's value in that, but, um, and then they would, we would expect to see that happen. Um, but in these particular instances, it's demo now, wait for a buyer, figure it out later to sell the property because the building's in a shape that, that the property is more valuable now than it is with it. Um, so those were some of the mindsets, if that answers the question.
Yeah, that answers the question. I, I just, and I don't know that, I don't know that we can regulate that, but it would, uh, it would feel, it would feel a little uncomfortable for me, for the municipality to pay to help somebody demolish the building, and then pay to help them put a facade on it. That would almost feel like, uh, an unfair advantage of taxpayer money. Seems like it should be one or the other, but I don't know with what we have here, that's a, uh, something we can even regulate. I guess it's up to the committee.
You, you could certainly change the policy, change the ordinance to say that it's just simply not allowed. Um, but for whatever the, the value is, you do have a committee of professional architects who sit, or who's got some professional architects and also some citizens, who sit and evaluate each one of these and make a determination on, on whether they feel the project is valuable. And it's in no way, shape, or form a rubber stamp. They have turned down projects before, they, you know, they work with owners to make projects better, so I think that they certainly are trying to impose Council's will and, and make sure the money's well- money's well spent. But to directly answer your question, yeah, you could change the ordinance to say, you know, maybe you can only get one every 10 years, or one per property period, or however you envision it is a possibility. But I would say it's worked fairly well, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. And their judgment is always good. I just, I would think something like that, when you look at demolition, if I was going to provide these funds for demolition, I would definitely want to, I would definitely want some time period to elapse before we entertained any type of grant for a facade. And maybe that's a soft rule and just reasonable course of action, or we can probably discuss that outside of here.
Any other comments? Yes, Mayor Protam.
If they're doing demolition, isn't the facade granting only for an existing building, though? I mean, it probably wouldn't be for a new construction.
We ever had any on a new building? The way the policy is written right now, new construction is exempted.
There you go.
So, I mean, they couldn't get that there.
If you demoed it and you built another building there, you wouldn't be able to apply.
Wouldn't be.
For 50 years until that building started.
Right. All right. Money won't be there then.
But theoretically, if you tore down a portion or a part, then if it was not new construction, then it might also qualify.
That was my concern, was full demolition, because I know there are some things we'd like to see fully demolished.
Yes.
And wouldn't want to do full demolition and put a facade.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, I was uninformed. Thank you, Mr. Hanson.
Mr. Stambleitis.
I wanted to tag on to Mr. Poole's comments. He was right, he wants to encourage demolition. There has been some abandoned buildings in the town of Lexington that we would like to see developed that, for whatever reason, they have not been developed, and we feel it's an eyesore and a detriment to the town of Lexington. So this is why we included the language for demolition, providing financial incentive for those landowners to demolish these abandoned buildings. And we think in the long run, it'll have a very positive effect in those particular areas, so I do applaud our Council and our staff for putting this together for that sole purpose, to encourage people to remove abandoned buildings that are an eyesore and a detriment to the community.
Very good. Any other comments? Motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Mayor Protam Hazel Livingston, City of Greenville, IIMC Region 3 Conference Host Sponsorship Request. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Camilla Pittman, City Clerk of Greenville, will host the International Institute of Municipal Clerks Region 3 Conference in February 2018. The meeting will bring approximately 1,600 municipal clerks to Greenville for continuing education. Delegates will represent South Carolina, Alabama, Florida, Georgia, and North Carolina. The conference rotates between Region 3 states and it's usually hosted by Greenville. Charleston went in South Carolina's turn. At the August 21, 2017 work session, Council discussed a sponsorship of $500 to help the City of Greenville to free the conference cost. I make a motion for Council approval.
Mayor Protam makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Councilmember Manis, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis, Explore Lexington County Advertisement. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mayor McDougal was approached by Jerry Balloon from Lexington County Chronicle regarding the town's possible participation in his new publication, Explore Lexington County. During the August 21 Council work session, a motion was made to place the item on the September 5 Council meeting agenda for consideration of a half-page advertisement focused on the Ice House Amphitheater. Following the work session, it was determined that in order to meet the deadline for publication, a council telephone poll had to be taken. Town Administrator Poole conducted a telephone poll vote of council for approval on August 22, 2017. The vote was unanimous in favor. A copy of the requested letter, the publication information, and the half-page advertisement are attached. I make a motion for ratification of the telephone poll vote.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mayor Protam, second submotion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ted Stambleitis, emergency procurement for repaving East Sparrowwood Run. Councilmember Ted Stambleitis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of Town Council. A large emergency utility repair project required an emergency procurement in the amount of $41,360 for repaving of East Sparrowwood Run in the Mallard Lake subdivision. A telephone poll vote of council was conducted by Town Administrator Britt Poole on July 6, 2017. The vote was five in favor and two opposed. I'd like to make a motion for, to ratify the telephone poll vote. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor and Town Council.
Councilmember Stambleitis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second submotion. Any further discussion? Britt, I just want you to remind everybody how much money we saved by doing that emergency procurement instead of waiting out. I think we saved a substantial amount of money that night.
That's a hard question to answer, but we did originally think that the repair was probably going to be closer to $100,000.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. At this time, we will have announcements from Councilmember Todd Corners, but before he gets into announcements, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish him a happy birthday on the 28th of this month.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm almost 40.
Almost 40, sir.
All right. Can't wait to get there and see what it's like. Y'all can tell me.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you very much. All right. We would like to express condolences to our sheriff, Jay Coon, and the recent loss of his mother, Ruth Coon. We would also express condolences to all the people suffering with Harvey, and we have Irma bearing down. We send our thoughts and prayers out to Houston and all those people. We understand a little something about floods, and we're very empathetic. Moving forward, this is the last month for the town's farmer market, so don't forget to come out every Saturday this month, 9 to 12, at Lexington Square Park. The Historic Preservation Board meets on Tuesday, September 12, 5:30 in Conference Room 8. Traffic Committee will meet next Wednesday, September 13, at 8:00 a.m. in the third-floor conference room. Council will meet again on Monday, September 18, at 6:00 in the Eli Mac Room for the Council Work Session. You can wish me a happy birthday again on that day, bring your presents. The Planning Commission will meet Wednesday, September 20, at 8:00 a.m. here in Council Chambers. As the mayor said earlier, Fall Concert Series kicks off with The Business at the Ice House Amphitheater. Free concert every Thursday for five weeks, ending with The Root Doctors on 19th. And get your tickets for Night of Classic Rock with a Resurrection, Journey Tribute Band, and On the Border, an Eagles Tribute Band. I have daughters 15, 17, and 19, and they hear and listen to Journey and the Eagles, and I love reminded them, that's my music. Because they think my music's not cool when I tell them, then they're shocked. So it's a good one for the whole family. You can come out. I actually have a friend of a friend who's in that resurrection band, and believe it or not, he says he can do Steve Perry. Tickets are $15. You can get them online or at K Cowboy, or visit our website, icehouseamphitheater.com. Thanks for watching your Town Council in action tonight. Hopefully, we serve you well. That's what we all attempt to do on this council.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Corners, anyone else have any comments they'd like to share? Hearing none, are there any public comments? Anyone in the crowd wishing to speak on tonight's agenda? Yes, sir. Come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Mr. Mayor, Kevin Conley.
Hey, Kevin.
First, I want to thank everyone for the affirmative vote on the Autumn Wood Crossing tonight. I did want to recognize that we have residents here from the new Hampton's Crossing facility that we built in Lexington, and we also have folks from our facility over in Irma Westcott. So they took their time to come out tonight. Unfortunately, it wasn't an opportunity to speak, but I wanted to recognize them for their efforts in coming over tonight to support the proposal.
Very good. Thank you. Thank y'all for being here. And I know y'all were thoroughly entertained by this. So thank y'all for coming. Any news media with us tonight? Anybody with the news media? No news media? That concludes our business for this evening. Thank you for watching the Town Council meeting for the town of Lexington. This meeting was held at Town Hall on Tuesday evening, September 5, 2017. A recording of this meeting will be aired on the town's information cable, Channel 2, several times during this week. Without objection, we are adjourned.